We have lost now seventy-five hundred and forty-one of our two thousand one. Over a third of our maintenance crew is now gone. Over a third of our ministry staff is gone. Over a third of our resource management staff is gone. We have kept in check the most of our visitor centers and our law enforcement staff to protect the public and protect our resources. These are challenging days, and we're still waiting for our budgets. We've got to operate now under continuing resolution. We're waiting to see what's going to happen when it's equestrian. We're waiting to see what will happen with our appropriation later this year if there is any new official. So it's an interesting time for us, a lot of uncertain. Yet, the good news is we have a lot of dedicated people who really want to do the right thing. In our general management plan, we included, I think, a really key paragraph, and that is, "We're committed to working with the community." Because we recognize we own the Parkway economy, not the National Park Service, the American public, and we want to engage the public and the community to look to the facts and to make sure that we all join together protecting Parkway in a positive direction. After all, it is an economic engine. There were $2.2 billion spent by the sixteen million people who passed through the Parkway this year in twenty-nine counties, and we want to make sure that we don't kill that goose that's laying the golden eggs year in and year out. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your invitation to be here. You may have mentioned, I didn't notice, but I didn't mention the overlord of our actual. It's a tough economic time right now. Do you think you might add any resources? I haven't forgotten much.
One more question, or two, or three. Is there a motion for that chair to be honored?
Yes.
Second, my dear. He needs special. Paul is in fact, Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Come down here.
That's what it looks like. No, it's a... I've had the pleasure of knowing Phil Francis since I've been a commissioner. Phil, didn't tell you, he started off as a posse interpreter at Kings Mountain Battleground. He's a rover data, so just had a little drive over there to Kings Mountain Military Battleground, and he did start forty-one years ago. Phil Francis has worked in Washington, Santa Fe, Yosemite, Shenandoah, and he worked at Smoky Mountain as the gun special before he came here, I believe. So, what we have, some of the things we're the most proud of in our community, we have Phil Francis fingerprints all over, maybe as gun friend as you can interpret for the Kings Mountain folks. As he said, we had nineteen million people who started. The visitation is still the best part, Lurie's Parkway. He's done the best he can, done the yeoman's job for having his budget cut every year and having to continue with resolutions instead of having to complain and work with it. So it's my pleasure to do two things. I would like to declare, now he picked this date, April 1st wasn't our idea. I think my first has other connotations, but the Buckland County Commission declare April 1st, 2013, his retirement day. Phil Francis Day. On behalf of all Buckland County citizens, we take the opportunity of your retirement to express our respect and appreciation for the dedication and commitment to these families to meet them. Your leadership and vision have made a lasting contribution to the lives of our citizens and to the future of our national park system and the good of Parkway. Let's give this man a hand. And just in case it gets cold on that Friday, the commission has, this is a blanket made by a local crafter, and he has the thing I forget, somewhere in Buckland County, but we're there. We give this to VIP people, I don't care about a city, this is to remind you of your home and how much we think of you and what you've done for Buckland County, and so you pretend that we will miss you. You've done wonderful work, and you've made a difference, and we always like the honor of folks that have made a difference and have...
Thank you, David. Thank you for the commission for this. It's a great honor. It's an honor to be here, beginning with. Now, regarding dates, take it for personal, I'll have to tell my staff, take it for school and the law camp, and you go to my office and I'll let them know what I mean by that. That might be fun, but really, I think the day I started officially is representative of how much I care for the folks that are already on business today. Thanks for all.
I'm privileged to do this presentation on the seventy-fifth anniversary, and I learned to enroll in it, and I had the honor of spending some time with the folks up there, and I saw how much to respect North Carolina and Virginia's after you, and it's all over, not just Buckland County, it's the whole area. We wish you. Next up, we have a public hearing on the Matthew Lowery, I don't know, Lowery zoning request moved into commercial services. We have Debbie from you to tell us about that.
Thank you, Chairman, and Mr. Gore. Matthew Lowery has provided a resound portion, tax lot ten nine six two nine one five seven two six nine, and then tax lot ten nine six two nine two four one nine two two. Together, a total of approximately eleven point seven acres. They are residential, they are long to small family residences, which requested to be rezoned to the shoes to commercial services. The properties are located in sections of Old County Home Roads and New Western Highway. One lot is one point three three acres, currently owned by R1 and its son's on Old County Road. Another lot is fourteen acres tract, two as a question to rezonate, the eastern portion of the pack is about two point four acres, currently owned both RLD and R1. That lot has furnished on New Western Highway. The application is to rezonate the western super portions, the RLD that's currently owned, and to rezonate the eastern portion, which is better land and has better access to New Western Highway. The one point three acre lot has a single home on it now, and the larger lot is currently unveiled. Property to the north of this is some CS, on the county, on Buckland County. Are in the city of Asheville, Joe Station, at Marshall's Own, H3 and CP2. The surrounding area is a mix of residential and commercial development. The request that CS zoning is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, as the update indicates, CS is intended to provide suitable locations for cluster commercial development to encourage concentration of commercial activity in those specified areas with access to major traffic arteries. Given the commercial uses in the area and adjacent commercial zones, CS zoning is consistent with surrounding uses, reasonable and public interest, and the planning board recommends that it be reserved for us. January 4th of this year, the planning board filed a public hearing on this application. Four weeks later during that hearing, the laborer folks and the officials, their main concerns were the traffic coming, commercial traffic coming to the property, and then by their homes in a positive storm cloud right now. I would like to say that if it's more rezoned to the commercial service, anytime someone involves the commercial property, it has to be residential property, it's rezoning or it's those type of things, those two properties. Unfortunately, the department has been in recognition to need storm cloud products. The planning board found those rezonating consistent with the land use plan, reasonable and public interest, has proper access to major traffic arterial, and is consistent with surrounding commercial development along the Western Highway. The planning board recommended in the vote of eight to one to approve this rezoning. Have any questions?
What is the level of, what is required?
Two rows of different levels.
For the size, the quantity of trees?
There is a, I want to say it starts at Sixth Street to the road, a little bit higher than that, and then I think, top.
It's going to be a, it's going to be storm cloud events we have, probably, so we can hear. Any questions? Scott?
If not, we'll have a public hearing. We'll have a comment for thirty minutes. We declare the public hearing open at five twenty-one. Any members of the public who speak or on this rezoning report?
I'd just like to say one thing. First, my property, I joined this piece of property. I'll have one concern, actually, two concerns. One, if anybody has any idea what we've done there. Second, property lines are not right, as far as my property next to there. So, somebody contact me, and maybe we'll get this worked out, and I'll be asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Yes, sir. Mr. Rice, please. Do you have a question?
Good afternoon. My name is Spencer Arden, and I'm Matthew Lowery's brother. I'm just coming forward to give some more clarification on what we think on your own property. I'm in the grading business, and currently I operate, it's right out of Madison County Buckland County line, so it takes me quite a while to drive to my apartment every day. I plan on, in the near future, putting a small shop that I can work on equipment and use as a base operation for my small grading company. The second thing that we would do, and this is much further down the road, within a five year, we plan on placing some storage units on the property. As far as I know of that, it's all the commercial development that we proceed within the next five years. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Rice? Does anyone want to speak after Mr. Rice?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I have a question. I wanted to ask this question. David's eight member voted for it and went against it. I think it would be great to appear and walk up first and vote against for it.
All right, any other members of the public wish to be heard during our public hearing? Yes, sir.
My name is Delton Spigot, and my son and I own the property next to, probably, where the entrance to, where we live, is, it's very small, if you look at it, draw it, very small, a lot, fifty by one fifty, maybe. And if the zone, if the zone portion is all you probably think, the one I got a feeling this property is going to go through, sounds like, but I want to, for Mr. Lowery, I met your brother.
Yes, sir.
At one time, and I'd like for him to look, and you guys, to look at this through, maybe my eyes, and realize that probably my, our property cannot ever be a commercial property, because it's so small, there's no parking or anything. So, I can envision other things being there besides what was just talked about. Other properties that might not be in the dark for residential property, you have to think of that. And if you, if you remember, or people who are here know, that property is only obvious to the public, then if houses were next to this, in the situation, it wouldn't be a private place. I'm going to look at for a moment from Mr. Rice's situation, and if I had just purchased that property, I would be thinking about maybe flipping the property and maybe selling it in lots or smaller pieces, and if it was a zone of commercial, it would certainly be more about desire for purchasing that property. A lot of moving is probably could be made, that may not be there in this, but could be. So it could be further down the road than the fiber avenue that he's talking about. But we, as a small individual residential owner, would be more, have more problems with coming and going with the fact that we would be next to the entrance. What would be done? I would ask if you, look, ask this, go.
Thank you, Mr. Spigot. Excuse me, Chairman, can, can the colored map we pulled up there and show us where his lot is, what he's talking about? You gotta do that. I'm guided here, but my eyes are not that good. I'm trying to figure out where his lot is.
I have a map. Do you have a map?
Well, I'm getting ready to pull that up. I have the colored map, just trying to figure where it is. There it is. Can you tell us where your place is on that map?
On the south side, adjacent to the property at the entrance from Old County.
Your entrance is off Old County?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to be heard? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed at five thirty. Any questions from the commission or comments?
I understand, again, the gentleman wants to want to try to do, I understand the gentleman at the time. I really wanted to try to look at the properties before we actually tried to some issues here that I could give a mission, if the property mine is, I would look at, most questions I'm asking you to do with the dollar, whatever that is.
All right, I'll take that as a motion to table the, let me ask this, should we do on three, there's several, it's like there's several parcels, should we do them all together? What do you think? Two parcels to one application? And we handled the, I guess it was a public hearing, two for one, or do we consider this separately, each parcel, or should we?
We can put every one, set up a big one, and it's simple rules, just a point order, you know, table, and that's the only way, because we set it to make certain if it was a position.
That's okay, all right. All right, then I guess I'm going to take a motion to approve this.
Well, I think he's for Mr. Friar's, what's postponed.
Okay, is there a second to Mr. Friar's motion?
Can I ask a quick question? So, in terms of the, you know, property line reference, what kind of due diligence do we, and how much of that has to be determined in order to submit a rezoning application? I mean, I guess I don't want us to pretend like we're getting in a world of whatever title search and stuff like that, so you can kind of wait.
We don't get involved with that day to day. You find two lawyers, you find two surveyors, you do two surveys, sometimes it's almost like, a lot of counties, especially outside of town, that's where I live, requests in the rural communities, a lot of those are surveyed long ago, surveyed rules from state to change through the valley, so that might be part of it, how old the survey is, how old the deeds are, so typically, it's not something that we can get involved in, and if they were putting, maybe we're putting fences because of the roads, and there's more issues, and like that, survey, and neighbors, you might say, I don't know. But to answer your question, I think...
So, in the event that the presented property was rezoned, and there was a dispute, and then it was determined that in fact what was rezoned was, there were different ownership, does the rezoning happen to, it goes with the property as opposed to ownership?
Well, we were talking, the issue with the property line here is more particular than the zoning maps, or the zoning maps are based on parcel ownership, so I think that the zoning, zoning would be for parcels in question, and the mapping office and the tax office does its best to follow whether the flats are there, if there's been a survey or using map westing to try to follow the site, if there's some, follow the parcel.
You feel very, you feel very clear about parcel.
It's, it's...
Okay, so it's really, that's very helpful, so it's not really property lines, it's about parcel, parcel.
More general than exactly the case.
If I understand correctly, if I'm looking at that correctly, what is the question? Is the piece of property that is on Old County Home Road, is not a question about the park that orders Western Highway?
All right, well, let's, I'll tell you what, let me, let me, I'm going to record, we want to have a public hearing closed, because I think the board has questions, is that more comfortable with that? It's these guy, he raised the issue. Can you hear where he is?
I can hear him very real good.
Go on. Okay, well, if you could approach the, make sure, or I'm sorry to get to the...
I hope. I hope.
I think we can get that map, like...
I'm bringing my back.
Okay. All right. See at the top, which would be the north west corner, okay? One block. When I bought that property, in eighteen ninety-seven, I mean, there is a fence there, and two pens. What I've got shows just one pen there, and instead of following the fence lines, what it used to be, now it comes down into my property. I have two buildings there, and three quarters of one is on this property, and a little bit of the other. I don't know who made the changes. I don't have, but I just pray somebody buys that property rezoned, but I lose my buildings. See where I'm concerned? So, I guess the best way to do it would be with somebody here associated with it, that does all these plans here, and then we can come to a solution to this. But I don't like, it's not a whole lot of land, but to me it is, it's like about two hundred feet long, and a max of, oh, about sixty feet. This is also my lawn, for the trees, so I just like people I...
Any other questions, Ron?
A person, not for the gentleman, but for my own application and maybe for folks who are not familiar with the zoning process. If somebody could give like a short version of, maybe Debbie can do, the, Mr. Creighton, by the time you all hear these appeals, have you spent a significant amount of due diligence involving them? Is that right? Is there a significant risk of injury?
Yeah, there's this question, it's one of the, honestly, we know this everybody, we have, so, and I see, it's very process for, like, you all change your, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about, there's an issue between property owners.
Right. It's somewhat of a repressive, you don't put the planning board at the point.
It takes us, we advertise, and then it's got to be set, we've got to set up, maybe we got to advertise, and we come to a...
John, to Mr. Rice's point, do you know what the concern was? That was one of the...
She just passed a...
Well, I've got, I've got a question for some of the, and this is probably what Mr. Drew, if there is a property on this street, and Mr. Lowery has somebody that has to rezonate this property, we would have no right to rezonate anything other than this property. We do not have any, any other party that would be on, or this, or this, or this, or somebody else.
We have, with so many maps, with so many map, that's, that's going to change one particular parcel and one zone classification for others. So, again, that's based on, that's the information available to the mapping office, the tax office, the show, so it's the parcel, so best of our information, the area indicated on the map is on by fires, but there may be a boundary on this street, I mean, it might cut across the line somehow, but the application process won't, can't change that. I can't get to sympathize, but I mean, this, this, like, John was saying, this has to be a matter between two adjacent owners, and what they might want to...
The taxes, we advertise, and then, you know, it's gotta be set, we need to set up, maybe we gotta advertise. Uh, John, to Mr. Rice's point, do you know what the concern was about that was one of the, see?
She, she just passed a.
Well, I've got, I've got a question for some of the gentlemen, and this is probably what Mr. Drew. If, if there is a property line dispute, and Mr. Marley has somebody asking to set this property, we would have no right to resell anything other than this property. We, we do not have any, any other party to go beyond certain of this on that.
We have, with zoning maps, with zoning map amendment, that's, that's going to change one particular parcel and one zoning classification. So again, that's based on, that's the information available to, to the mapping office, the tax office, the show of the, so it's the parcel. So best of our information, the area indicated on the map is on by fires. But there may be a boundary on this field, I mean, it might cut across the line somehow. Uh, the application process won't, can't change that, and I can't get to some advice, but, I mean, this, this like. John was saying, this has to be a matter between two adjacent owners, and what they're trying to do in terms of getting surveyed and ensure that they relate to their own property or, or.
Well, I, I think the point that was still made, you know, if you serve that property, I'm certainly asked not to tone it up. Take some of the property, like, say, if you can do, might do the thing you're, take some of the property.
The zoning classification doesn't take anybody's property, but if you might live together, it comes parcel one, it comes parcel two. Which is by zoning map amendments, going to have to show up, zoning ministry, it's changing, zoning classification, parcel, parcel shift.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? And I'm, you know, this is, I'm still, this is a second meeting. I wanna make sure I'm pretty all the facts, I'm understanding them accurately, and I'm actually still a little unclear on which property, uh, different property. But actually, it might be helpful if, if in the future, there's, you know, a little ways to interpret this. What the business is describing, well, my property is the one where this direction is, there's a lot of properties on this map, so I wanna make sure I'm crystal clear. Would you be okay for the gentleman to approach and just point on my map? I just wanna make sure I'm familiar with property, it says, or could you show me?
Okay, on, on that map up there, the, uh, the parcel in question is sort of a big fat shaped seat, horseshoe spot in there. The one parcel which we commented a long ago is the yellow area, it's in the northwest corner of the property. So we're towed right in, yes, at the end of what's.
You're saying right there.
At the end of towed road right up in the northwest corner. The other parcel that was mentioned is that, is the yellow, you know, bottom horseshoe area. Right above where the C goes in, yes, that was the one parcel mentioned. That's small house.
But I have a question for the planning staff of this. And so, if I'm, if I'm interpreting this correctly, if this property, if you resell the property to this commercial use, there are these other properties, um, that are said residential, that would basically be surrounded by, entirely surrounded by commercial zone properties? And I guess my question is, does that, you know, does that raise, does that raise a concern?
Well, I think you're talking about the surrounded by, but it's something that everyone, it's a highway. Yes, those would remain residential, there is one commercial business in there, and it's done residential.
But just to proceed, I found a great, I think we need to have capacity, this presentation. People can play these cards in the future, so if we can change the, I'm gonna have a, I had. So good to see. Um, so people can designate and or. I would also number the maps, if that's ever asked. Like, I think you know where it is. So what's the pleasure, any other questions or any comments about, uh, Marley?
I, 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 I will. I think this, this is, um. I guess, uh, I think it's a, it's a, it's not a kind of easy call for, for, for me, I think there's, you know, on the one hand, this is a property, that there are, there's lots of commercial property on Lester Highway, and I agree with the staff analysis that there's good, good reason to support the idea that this would be an appropriate place at the site. But I think that some of the neighbors' concerns are, are legitimate as well, and I do have some concern about how some of them are, uh, the extent of this commercial, this work fully built out, we can't just, um, you know, we, we, even if the property owner's saying, here's what I'm planning to do, we really have to think about the full spectrum of things that could happen on the property. The property were sold, or someone had different plans in the future. And I think there is some, some relative concern about the extent of commercial intrusion on the residential properties, um, around it. So it's, I think it's a, it's a close call in my book. I think that it's not our place though to make decisions on, um, potential property boundary disputes. So I don't think that, that can really weigh into, that is weighing in my opinion on this. Um, although it's a tough call, I mean, for myself, I would second the motion to defer, I think, to the, to the deputy poll.
You get a motion without a second is to, to, um, to put on the consideration. The red discussion of the motion to defer. And I'm gonna go ahead and ask a red discussion of the overall. Is there a second for this kind of? I think there's a second. So the motion to defer the zoning has been reviewed by staff and planning. Okay, then, the motion by Commissioner Newt, second by Commissioner Park, is there a red discussion on the motion to defer the staff and planning to review the nature? If not, our question, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That'll be sixty-one for our end. The next matter of business we have is, we have the panel manager. Next we're businesses, good business, Range Rover River, we're gonna call the planning organization. And we were here to talk about what this is about.
Mr. Chairman, in terms of the first thing, I'd like to, this has a claim under the, you know, changes to the land under the standing. My name is Sina Zinda, as chairman of the, and I work at Land of Sky Regional Council. Range Rover and PEO could be a set, um, aside entity, but it really makes more sense for us to be housed in another entity, which is currently a house of the sky, because it has a building with few staffs on it. It sounds, um, for us to be housed in another sky, they can have our new history, they can talk, and there's a towards, and I can ask this. And if I can, I bring up the public, please. Where the doctors delivered about the history of the, um, NPO and some organizations which are created by the federal government. So, um, NPOs were set up in the sixties initially, at that time, there are a lot of concerns coming out because there are some major private projects being rebuilt, where local government stakeholders and the general public are not fully informed of their processes, are not fully involved, there was not a due process for public comment. So that's why the local player organizations were set up to really facilitate a better transportation planning and public participation process at the regional level, where the local, um, stakeholders can come together, prioritize transportation projects, and bring it to the state and federal officials for funding. Range Rover and PEO was set up in the nineteen sixties as well, it was initially centered around Asheville and Bunca area, and then, um, our territory is largely defined by the census though. The two thousand census, the urbanized area has grown in portions of Haywood and Anderson County. And most recently, we had another census in twenty-ten, at that point, the urbanized area has expanded into portions of Madison County and the tiny silver Transylvania County. So this expansion, due to the census designation of urbanized area boundaries, is the main reason why we're coming here tonight to ask you to amend the M Y E changes. As a result of the urbanized area changes, we have to implement additional measures to the field. Uh, so mentioning, yeah, housing, Land of Sky Regional Council, and I wanted to mention a couple of the projects, um, which would be, um, supporting some of the initiatives that might be important to Bunca County. And one of them, um, is we have additional other platters and staff, and Bill Aker, for example, has worked with Non-Robility, helping them find grants opportunities to substitute alternative fuel technologies for some of the, um, air transit lands and other transit vehicles, and that helps save the cost to, um, Bunca County, Non-Robility, and other services. Another example is Bunca County's master plan, that was partially funded with the French River and PEO transportation funding funds in the local management. Another example is, um, with, um, directly allocated service transportation dollars, and PEO has the power to allocate in our region. We'll be funding, um, side load projects on New Lester Highway and Anderson Road, um, going forward in twenty-fourteen and twenty-fifteen. And also the Black Mountain Trail Laser Service, the operations for that system are currently funded partially with a FTHR grant, and PEO oversees the process, um, to review and select those grant applications. Those are just some of the examples. There are various other projects, there's, such as Lester Highway, um, project, which we will be discussing later too. Bunca County does have representation on all committees, um, we have a staff level committee, um, TCC, where it is Brandon and Josh O'Connor. And I believe most recently, another, um, staff member has been added to represent Bunca County on the TCC. And, um, our transportation advisory committee, um, Commissioner Howard Jones and Commissioner Ratty Newman are currently representing for Bunca County. And our next meeting is, um, the next Thursday, the committee. So as a reminder, um, we are bringing in an additional new member, so Madison County is coming in as a full voting member, um, the town of Mars Hill is also coming in, um. There are portions of Bunca County which were previously covered by the rural player organization, Land of Sky RPO, which are now, um, coming into the NPO planning area instead, that's, um, along the Jupiter Road area. And then Transylvania County is coming in as some ex-official no voting member, so they have chosen at this time not to be used to the field, but they can still participate in discussion. So now just highlights some of the areas where the, um, urbanized area boundary has changed, and as a result, the lighter blue highlights the planning area. So the planning area has to include the territory where we expect their urbanized area to grow in the next four years, so it's a little larger than the, uh, urbanized area, which the census, um, makes us include. So largely this M Y U update is due to the census changes, um, and there's, um, we do have to submit the, uh, update M Y U to the federal government, ideally by the end of March. So, um, we're hoping to have all the local governments adapt the M Y U, to also have the NPO T C adapt the M Y U at the March three meeting. One of the changes are some, uh, language changes, for example, we're changing the reference to the new federal legislature, um, just now map twenty-one, just got adopted in July of twenty-twelve, instead of T twenty-one. And also changing the reference, um, to metro and burning area as opposed to metro and area boundary as due to the federal regulations. And one of the language changes we're making as well is we, um, would like to start calling the transportation advisory committee, S NPO board, to make it more clear to the general public, this is the body made up of the elected officials, as opposed to, um, just a staff level technical committee. Another change that's happening is we're taking out reference to the, uh, primary needs list, because at the state level, there has been a change, uh, to set up this called SPOT, Strategic Office of Prioritization to prioritize projects based on data, and not simply based on, um, um, individual sensitivities. So, um, because this process has already been spelled out at the state level, um, we will continue to prepare a prioritized list of projects that the PEO, that will power, no longer will refer into this, the federal needs list. And we'll be spelling out what it tells in the bylaws of the state. And with that, I'd like to hear more questions.
Questions? I'm saying a motion to defer, I'm remembering the motion.
Turn again, I'm gonna throw this one in the motion.
Second. The motion by Commissioner Newt, the second by Commissioner Park, is a red discussion. So any other questions? If not, others in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next up, we'll hear from, uh, Dr. Tony Ballin about the school capital commission fund ordinance and the request for STEM school. Good seeing you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Grant, yeah. Thank you for having me, it's a good commission. I do wanna recognize our chairman of our school board, Mr. Reidenhardt, as well as, um, one of our officials, Mr. Pat Blain, who's also on board. Tim Fairley, who's the director of our facilities, and also Mr. Bernie Social, who, uh, facilitates our capital funding. Again, I'm, I'm very excited to be here. I can tell you, in my career, um, this will be in my top three list in terms of the enthusiasm that I have received from our community, and especially two groups I want to recognize, and that is our business organization, our business people in Bunca County and Asheville City, and also our colleges and universities. I do wanna clarify upfront, and apologize if, if you already know this, but I want to clarify that the capital funding we're requesting, lottery funding, five million dollar lottery funding, lottery funding currently is restricted to capital needs, in other words, it can't be used for operations. And I've, I've heard that, um, sort of, uh, mistake and that fallacy, um, over the last several months. We cannot use that funding for operations. Now, however, if you have the power to work with our legislators and allow some flexibility, I think we would all appreciate it. And also to clarify, those are existing designated funds. We are also asking for five hundred thousand dollars in Article thirty-nine funding. I think you're familiar with that particular source. Again, it is restricted to capital needs. However, the difference is that in Article thirty-nine, that particular source allows us some flexibility with technology. And with that, um, I'm going to define, as, as one gentleman has suggested, I was gonna do anyway, I'm gonna define what STEM means. I can tell you the only acronym, the only definition I'm aware of, is science, technology, engineering, and MAI. And with that said, I, I want to tell you why, Superintendent, I believe so strongly in the importance of this STEM high school for our kids. I saw a recent national study that was released in January two thousand thirteen, and it was done by the National Association of Colleges and Employers across the United States. And it identified, in terms of college majors, those that are maturing in the STEM fields, have the highest starting salaries in comparison to all other college majors. In fact, does anybody have any guess what the number one highest ranking particular career in STEM is for highest paying? It's an engineer. Probably not a surprise to you. But this is the fact that, um, I, I zero in on, STEM related jobs are growing sixty percent faster than any other career field. And that's an important statistic. And in our business, we are constantly looking at the crystal ball. It is clear in our crystal ball that STEM is absolutely crucial for our students and successful careers in the future. Let me give you a little bit of history. March two thousand eleven, our school board unanimously approved the closing of our Career Education Center. Why did we do that? Couple reasons. There were budget concerns. There were budget concerns. And second, what was happening is we were finding that our numbers in terms of student enrollment were dwindling. And what we determined is that we had a career ed center we were proud of, but it was the 20th century model. So what was said to our public at that closing is a commitment that we would reopen that facility. But when we reopened it, we would make sure that it offered a curriculum that met the needs of the 21st century. And I believe that that's what this particular program will do. That fall in 2011, we put together one of the largest committees that I've, uh, ever facilitated, and that was about 36 members, included, um, curriculum staff inside Bunkham County schools. It included professional agencies in Bunkham County associated with STEM. It included local colleges and universities, A D Tech, our wonderful partner, U N C Asheville, who also houses N C State, who, uh, who is hosting an engineering program there on the U N C A campus. We had a rep at our table, Western Carolina, and Mars Hill. And by the way, Mars Hill has one of the, um, fastest growing biotech majors in this particular area of Western North Carolina. They were at the table. We also brought a number of business organizations, local businesses to the table, um, along with, um, again, local government officials. So that committee began that planning. And so for the past year and a half, we have been hosting speakers from all over this state. Uh, we have been taking visits across the state of North Carolina. And by the way, I think if you resource this, you're going to find out that lottery funds have been used all across this state, uh, to fund renovations, to house STEM programs, as well as other, uh, innovative high school programs across this state. So it's not unusual. We established four non-negotiables. And this is what makes this STEM high school unique because what we were asked several times is, well, why don't you just simply take the STEM program and let's disperse it in all six of our high schools? The difference is, it's a school. It is a very special, it will be a school, as you walk in, it will be very different from any school, any of us in this room attended. Problem solving based, inquiry based, space, open space, tied into careers, apprenticeships, internships, tied into colleges and universities, college credits. And those are the non-negotiables, by the way. Uh, we started out saying that STEM must be integrated across the entire curriculum. So in other words, it's not just a STEM course. Now, we do have a course, by the way, called Project League of Way, and we have that now in every one of our seven middle schools. So our middle schoolers have an opportunity, everyone in Bunkham County, they have an opportunity to get that, get that exploration, that little bit of a foundation to determine whether or not at the high school level, this is the direction that they want to go. But in the STEM high school, science, math, technology, and applied engineering shows up in every course. That's what makes it special. Social studies, language arts, science, math, technology, engineering. Secondly, I talked about college/university connections. We want students inside that school to have the opportunity to get college credits. We've already come to the table with A D Tech. We already have a strong partnership. We think we can make it better. I've had a number of discussions with Chance Reponder, N C State as well. They understand that with, with this particular facility, there's an opportunity for us to, to do one of the best shots, I think, in this state of connecting with those secondary opportunities. Third, we've talked about the career connections. Any student that enters into that program, we want to guarantee them an internship or apprenticeship in a particular area with local business here in Western North Carolina. And I truly believe we can do it because we've had too many of our businesses, all of those you would recognize, say to us, we're in, we're in, just make this happen, give us that opportunity for, for your kids. And then finally, it's going to be a focus on technology. And technology that's used inside the classroom, that's applied to the instructional techniques, not just simply a device handed to a kid. But that's at the core. Those are non-negotiables. Now, we were lucky in that the state of North Carolina, the state board of education actually has a blueprint. And every STEM program in the state is going to be evaluated off of that blueprint. So we were fortunate enough to have those guidelines. In fact, that's going to be the, really the guiding blueprint for what this particular program looks like. We've heard a lot about including, making sure we include all stakeholders, especially our parents. And what I would say to you is that, that large committee, um, 60% of them were parents of kids in Bunkham County schools or Asheville City schools. So those parents were represented there, but we know that we need further input. So we have scheduled, uh, looking at the possibility on April the 8th to have an electronic town hall. We will send invitations out to all of our parents. We'll focus on middle school parents, especially those parents of rising eighth graders, because that would be the first hearted class, uh, ninth grade class, uh, as we project and hope an opening for fall 2014. We're also going to follow that up with going out into our six districts and meeting face to face with parents to educate them regarding the benefits, career benefits especially of STEM, and then to make sure we're gathering that input. So again, uh, with your approval, um, for the use of those capital funds and both lottery and 39, um, our goal is to open those doors August 2014 for a first class of ninth graders. And we also will pursue legislative status that would be granted for an innovative cooperative high school, which is similar to what our early college is on the A D Tech campus. And, uh, those of you that have, uh, I think, children in the Asheville City system, that's also equivalent to the Silt Department. I'm not here to debate disinformation, but I'm going to take this opportunity because what's been brought up to you in regard, regarding issues concerning the matter. I'll start out by saying that that was initiated with a claim that was sent to N C D R that Bunkham County School would be building a brand new high school, building a new high school, not renovation, but building it on 128 Bing Road. Now, I want you to understand, our campus is on 175 Bing Road. Across the street is 128 Bing. And yes, that was identified as a hazardous site a number of years ago. It also is the location of the former primary plant for Square D. But I also want you to know that it currently houses multiple offices, and two of those office centers, um, house federal government bullets. I also want you to know that over 200 employees are currently working in a building on 175 Bing Road, including Tony Ballin, including Mr. Bryant, uh, our representative from Irwin District, including his wife. Now, throughout this process, I've heard a lot about what's coming with STEM, but I never really heard outside concern about people at either side and their particular half. I've heard a lot about due diligence. Let me tell you, as Superintendent of Bunkham County Schools, the U S County Commissioners, I don't believe any citizen in this county could ask more due diligence than was provided by this Bunkham County School Board. In fact, it's clearly my opinion that they went over and above any required standard that we would have heard from North Carolina D R. They went over and above. I want you to be aware that we have since this issue came up and also understand that this project has been delayed by a year. The original schedule had us opening this STEM high school in the fall of 2013. It was delayed with cause of these concerns. As a result, this board committed to some significant testing to take place on this site. The accusations continued. I live within walking distance of CTS, lived there all my life, family lives there. One thing we have said from the start, this is not CTS. There has never been well water from, by individuals off of that property. All been city water. That was a key difference from the start. We said it, we screamed it from the rooftop, but they went over and beyond that, I'm saying the school board, in that additional monitoring and testing was put in place. One monitoring well, which was existing, was tested, came back non detected. Square D came back in and added a second monitoring well, non detected. These are, this is initial testing that's happened within a year. We actually added, brought in mountain environmental and did eight additional subs lab or soil samples to test this. In fact, at the February board meeting, and, um, Dr. Green, I'm going to leave this with you for the commissioners, this is a public document, soil vapor sampling report, because what was committed to by this board was a, was a four-year monitoring plan, again, to go beyond what any requirement would have come from us from the state or federal agency to put in place additional testing. We actually had the first stage of that testing to take place in January. The reason being that experts told us that the, the most efficient time, effective time to monitor, to test is in the winter months. That took place, and I got those results the same day of our February board meeting, and I presented this to the board. Three tests were done, including the two, um, monitoring wells, um, additional subs lab samples, um, total lake samples that came back to us, all non detected. I'm Superintendent of this Bunkham County School System, and my number one mission is to do work right for kids. The right thing is for us to move on with this. We cannot afford to hold 25,600 students at hostage one more year. We cannot afford for one more year to allow a full class of students at our Bunkham County School System not to have the opportunity to take advantage of this particular high school. And I'm going to agree with a statement that was made early because I believe it too. I believe that, that what the model that we use in this particular STEM high school, I truly do believe that it is a model that we're going to be able in the future, after Tony Ballin retires probably, but we're going to be able to use this as a wonderful model in all of our schools. This is a central location. This allows us to put in place what I truly believe to be, um, the top STEM high school in the state of North Carolina. And the reason I say that is because of the partnerships and enthusiasm and the connection that we now have worked for a year and a half to put in place. People are hungry in this community for this. Parents are hungry for this for their kids. Chairman Gann, thank you for allowing us to make this presentation. Any questions that you have at this time?
Any questions? Um, I just have a statement. The bottom line is, when you said people are hungry for this, um, if there's anything that we can do to make a student love school and with their love of school get a great paying job, then we're going to take away some of the hunger part. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Dr. Ballin?
Up above, I wonder if that build out of schools expecting more children to be in, I'm going to understand, still, we've got a lot of property, but not enough kids in it. Is there some way that we can do this and therefore farm and utilize, uh, still that we have, not capacity without spending money and then having to reach? I know if we do it, that we're going to be the one that's going to be the main thing. As commissioners, we're going to be getting the money for this. The main thing is Owen or Irwin or, or one of these, these schools that you have, basically Owen, he does it, we'll build bigger and closer, depending on people. Wouldn't it be, make a little more sense to put it in something like that than having a build out that's in town? It's easier to get one of the side schools than it is to go for those square D things, which is up in Mar-a-Lago, over hill, up to the top of the hill. Do we have any capacities there?
You know, I, I think there are capacities, and it's right across the, across the county. Uh, I truly believe that we've got some needs though, that if we get out of the box and be creative, I think we can find ways to more effectively use that space. Uh, and that's a fair question to ask. And, and to be honest, you know, we've, we've looked at those particular options, but again, regardless of where we place this STEM high school, it is, um, and it would probably take me a two-hour program to really be able to make sure you understood how different this concept is from any traditional high school that we have. Wherever this STEM program goes, there's going to be renovation costs because we're talking again, when you're saying science, technology, math, it, it is, is going to be, there's going to be considerable amount of renovation anywhere we go with it. And our hope is that this is going to be a high school to qualify, and I say this because to qualify for the innovative status, which also allows us to qualify for funding, operational funding, uh, which would certainly assist us, assist us in terms of not having to come to anyone for, for operational funds, that, uh, that has to be, we're talking about 100 students per class, and so that high school could not be over 400 students. So where we would have space to house a complete high school, and again, understanding that we're integrating math and science all across the board, every course these students take, it's just a whole different mindset. And physically, I don't know how we do and say, you know, six classrooms that we may squeeze space at Valley Springs Middle School, for example.
Well, I mean, Valley Springs, but we just opened up two more middle schools and moved to the Springs, so we're getting open areas in the county that, that is still costing us money. And, you know, I'd like to see, I mean, the people who are students are in the schools, like the new things in the, there's kids out of other schools to put in there, fill these schools. That's 2.4 million dollars that taxpayers are absorbing now for the two extra schools, uh, per year. I, I'm not against any STEM schools. Back when I went to school, we used to get out of noon and I'd go to work at Ari's Cadillac, learn how to work on a car. But the fact is, is there a different way that we can do it where it's not sick? Sitting in the city, I guess could be a good idea, but sitting in the county, that, that one of these schools, if you have to partial it off to make it work right, uh, if there's room, you know, let's look at that before we, and I understand what you're trying to say, everybody wants to step up, but we've got a certain percentage of kids that are going to be learning in, in this particular belt. But then we have the ones that still owe the high schools, it's not getting, uh, being able to do this. It's just like, we have charter schools, they have money that follows the kid. That's it. Everything else they have to raise and to do. So, you know, I look at it as, teach the kid and not worry about the bills. That's, you know, and that's, it might be the wrong philosophy, but I appreciate what you brought forward. I understand all the people thinking there's, you know, chemicals in this and had them sat. and this and that on the site. I don't know, you know, there's something that everybody has to find out. But I still think there's a way that, for the people of county, because Black County is not, you know, reviled county to us, so we want to do for the kids, we want to do for you, we want to do for all of Buckland County, but I would like to see if you could look at it in a different form.
I am very excited about the prospect, and I think it will be hot, so, but just when I think I can get more excited, I think I would you mention that there's probably a new funding stream that we tapped into. So could you say, and I apologize to you, remember about that?
Well, we get an opportunity as a cooperative, innovative high school to qualify for some funding, so we wanted to do that as part of this process. So, you know, I intend it's to, as soon as possible, put that application, because there are those other systems across the state that are going to, going back to qualify the wells.
Is it state funding stream or is it federal?
And what, just to guess, but in terms of that potential, if we were awarded that, what percentage of your operating budget would that bring up?
It's ballpark, I'd say possibly up to about sixteen, sixty-five percent.
Thanks very much. This is a great reservation, it's a real exciting prospect. I'm very excited.
I'll take that as a motion to approve. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I have, I do have a comment, I want to, I want to assure the public that whatever was sent here, that I intend to look at it. I have not seen it before, I intend to look at it. I am a supporter of STEM high school, it's a great thing, and at any time, the public brings something forward that we should do our due diligence on, since I haven't seen it, I intend to look at it, and I think all the staff should look at it, as well as commissioners too, and I'm sure they probably do.
All right, sir, second, Commissioner, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Jones is on that. Motion second by Commissioner Frost. Any other discussion or comments? Sir, Mr. McGinn?
Mr. Ball, I just have a couple of questions. Thank you. So I just want to, I just want to, obviously, the school board and your staff, you're all a lot closer to this than us, this is, we've spent months and years on this, we're spending a much shorter amount of time on it. But, you know, when you hear concerns raised at the data that we do, obviously, we want to, you know, we want to make sure where we are, you know, we take this kind of concern seriously, and I'm sure you do as well. I just want to, I just want to kind of repeat back what I heard you say, in terms of the process that you've used to look at those concerns, and make sure I heard it correctly. So, so in addition to following whatever regular state policy you need to follow for a project involving the Buckland School, the school board decided to do additional testing above and beyond that. And so you said you had eight additional test sites that you, you decided to?
A total of ten sites. And maybe to simplify that, what I would say is that we went beyond the monitoring of the water through those two wells, to actually take the soil and subs lab samples inside the area that was designated for STEM.
So on your, on the property where the facility will be located, the school will be located, you took, it wasn't water sample, it was soil samples.
That's correct, subs lab, that's correct.
So you sampled, you took the soil samples from the property where the school will be located, and those tests came back not indicating that there was the contamination that there's concern about from their property across the street, found that there was not evidence of any kind of contamination.
That's right, everything was below level.
And then, and then the county schools have committed to doing additional testing into the future to continue to confirm that there is no such contamination on the side of the school.
That's absolutely correct.
For four years going into the future.
Yes, for four years, and sequence in each of those years.
Thank you very much.
And it's my understanding also that there'll be enough soil disturbed in this, we're simply working within the existing building, and city water is provided there.
That's absolutely correct. And I would add that that is, when we look at Buckland County and our six school districts, that is a central location. In fact, we currently host our English as second language students, so we have transportation that's already structured to come into that building. That was also a really major sport.
Well, thank you for going over and above on the testing. I appreciate that. I've followed the STEM school for about a year now, and I'm very excited about the prospects of it.
Any other comments?
I just would like to thank Chair Reinhardt and board member of Bryant being here. I know you all spent an awful lot of time, I happen to hear a lot about your meetings and have good friends on the board, and thank you for doing this. For this backdrop training, there's a demand for STEM, we're increasing the supply. And folks, we can't wait for the U.S. or North Carolina government to lead us, we're going to have to lead them. Local governments got to step it up, and we'll step it up tonight, I believe, I hope.
Any other comments?
All question. All those in favor of adopting the motion to approve the STEM funding ordinance request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, you did good work on this. Next up, we have an add-on. We have the resolution concerning Highway sixty-three, Lester Road, and already, I've read that in our pre-session. I will ask question. Can you talk to that?
I'll read this in the interest of time. Basically, we are pretty neat resolution to ask the state beauty, working in conjunction with community leaders in Lester area, to come to a sample solution for the community and that will also meet the highways and highway parts to buy more of the Lester community. And that's simply all we're asking, if they will work with the leaders in Lester, Ida Bennett and Chris Nelson and two other people out there. So, that's where we're going.
All righty, just, I will re-ask real quickly, request DOT to work with the community on the current proposal, determine the community's vision for the future character of Lester, provide rest, so we have opportunity to identify improvements, and to basically give our constituents in Buckland County more say, more dialogue than is currently on the problem board. And come to mutually agreeable proposals for improvement. And that's the motion. I'll take that as a motion.
If not, all those in favor of the resolution as proposed in reading pre-session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The resolution is adopted seven zero.
Next, we have appointments. We have discussed in pre-session, Historic Resource Commission, we have elected to defer that so we can interview the candidates. We have a position on AB Tech Board of Trustees. Is there a nomination?
I would nominate Mr. Fry.
Nomination, the second, is there, are there any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Commissioner Fry is appointed by seven zero vote. Riverfront Development Board, we have, we have three nominations. Mr. King, Mr. King's been nominated, any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Commissioner King is appointed to the Riverfront Development here. MSD, we have, actually, we have two positions. We have Max Hader position and John Creighton position, are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Fisher Belcher.
And Commissioner Belcher's been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Frost has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for these two positions? The Hader seat and the Creighton seat. If not, all those in favor of Commissioner Belcher, Commissioner Frost to be, fill those seats, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. They, I would ask, Friendly Men, could you just take us back next week? I think there was a board meeting, or this Friday, and Mr. Hader had the last meeting. Okay, that, that good, so we'll amend that. We need to put on the member, if you could just do that.
Let's cover.
All right, okay, Friendly Men, let's see, you, you, okay, that'd be fine. All right, so is there, we will have a motion, I'll make a motion that we make these effective next week, next Monday, or just say next Tuesday, that would be the twenty, what, am I good at math? Twenty-fifth, okay, effective, well, that's another landmark that you guys, Vice Chair Jones, heard, I think you heard of that one? So this will be effective the twenty-fifth of February. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, I guess we got a reply second in there. Okay. Next up, announcements. The next regular board meeting will be March five, beginning at four thirty P.M. in the Commission Chambers, two hundred College Street, Room three twenty-six in downtown Asheville. County Commission meetings can be seen on BCTV Charter Cable Channel Two, ATV version, Channel ninety-nine, online on bucklandcounty.org during the meetings, or online anytime at bucklandcounty.org. Is there any other business to come before the board? I think we deduced there would not be a closed session tonight early, is that still okay? Any, any other business? All those in favor of, oh, is there a motion with your, a motion by Commissioner Belcher, second by Vice Chair Jones, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.